This town meeting not last as long as the last one.
You guys.
The Select Ordinance, number eight, the Noise Ordinance, is one of the other handouts, the full text of it. We're focusing on paragraphs one and two today. And the other handout is a list of the federal holidays and observe federal holidays. It is right at the. And we are going to go ahead and get started. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Patty Burble. I'm the moderator for the town meetings. I would ask that you assign your cell phones if you haven't already, or any other electronic device might have. And if you'd like to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I'd like to leave this. One nation. I'd like to do a quick introduction of the head table. We had Rich Rita, who is chairman of the Select Board. Our newest Select Board member is Wendy Draft Ever. To the right of Rich, you have Mark Code of our town manager, and to the right of him is David Nice. And over here on my left is Sharon Jerome, who is our Assistant Town Clerk and will be taking minutes. And do I hear a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Moderator, I'd like to move. Thank you. To see if the town will vote to amend Select Ordinance Number Eight, Noise Ordinance. Section two amended on March fifteen, twenty twenty-three by amending the definition of which federal holidays are affected by this ordinance. This ordinance, section two, little reading, quote, "No construction activity that produces an unreasonable amount of noise, which may be heard from adjacent and/or public properties, shall be permitted anytime on Sundays, federal holidays, and any of terror federal holidays," close to quote. The Select Board recommends approval three zero.
Do I hear a second? Only a simple majority vote is required for this, and your vote will be just showing yes. And Rich has a short presentation you'd like to make.
Yes, thank you, everybody, for coming. I'll make this quick. So there are five, if you look at the noise ordinance, there are five paragraphs which discuss different sources of noise and how and when those sources are regulated. The ordinance does not specify all sorts of noise, but generally covers all noise. The town doesn't have noise level standards. We don't have, we don't set decimal level, decimal levels. We don't have a meter to read decimals, as happens in other towns. The noise ordinance standard used by Waterville Valley is, quote, "An unreasonable amount of noise, which may be heard by adjacent and/or public properties." Unreasonable, if you look at the after exemptions, the paragraph after exemptions, is defined in the ordinance, and it has been, in practice, taken to me in the ear of the listener who submits a complaint to the Department of Public Safety. Now, the first two paragraphs concern noise generated by, quote-unquote, "construction." They date back to July of nineteen eighty-eight and have been amended via town meeting over the years. Up until twenty twenty-one, construction activity was the only subject of the noise ordinance. Other sources or times of noise were regulated through state nuisance statute. Now, paragraph three, just to complete the survey of the ordinance, concerns noise generated by various sources between the hours of ten PM and eight AM or nine AM for Saturdays and Sundays. And paragraphs four and five concern noise generated by and from motor vehicles at any time, and that was added in twenty twenty-one. And finally, again, as I said, something to keep in your mind as we discuss this in vote, the Select Board for the ordinance has the power to grant an exemption and permit otherwise prohibited noises, noise in from that listed in paragraphs one to three upon application by, by the persons seeking the exemption. So let's turn to construction noise. We are here to revisit changes made to the noise ordinance at twenty twenty-three town meeting. At that meeting, the noise ordinance concerning construction activity, again, paragraphs one and two, was modified to remove the unreasonable noise standard on Sundays, as well as on federal holidays, to be chosen by the Select. The Select Board received a number of, I'd say, in the vicinity of forty, upwards of forty comments, complaints from residents, taxpayers, and guests who were concerned that noise from commercial construction activity was not allowed on all seven days of the week, from eight or nine AM to seven AM, as well as on some number of the eleven federal holidays, all of which have been previously subject to the unreasonable noise standard. In short, the construction activity unreasonable noise standard was reduced from applying to about sixty-three days of the year to about six to nine days of the year. That was the impact of the vote that was taken in March. So now, currently, it's reflected in the, the noise ordinance you see in front of you. There are no noise restrictions on construction Monday through Friday from eight AM to seven PM, nor on Saturday or Sunday from nine AM to seven PM. So one other, one other point here, per the direction of the twenty twenty-three town meeting, the Select Board did choose two out of the eleven federal holidays to remove from the unreasonable noise standard. Those two days were Juneteenth, National Independence Day, and Columbus Day. However, several residents observed that this could be perceived as racist. So the Select Board suspended its choices in favor of bringing the issue to the special town meeting for final resolution. So that's why when you look at the current noise ordinance, you will see, in effect, no changes to federal holiday. In other words, we did not select, remove any federal holidays from the unreasonable noise standard. So the final key points for discussion. Construction is not defined, but has been taken by most to mean commercial construction. However, the way the ordinance has written all construction to include, for example, a neighbor building a deck or doing home renovations or building a structure such as a shed are subject to the noise restrictions as construction noise. This is a noise ordinance, and this is an important point. This is not a work, a work ordinance. We are not prohibiting work on any day of the week. Construction work on any day of the week is, is not prohibited, period, full, full stop. It's unreasonable noise, which is regulated and prohibited as specified in the, in the noise ordinance. Right now, as of today, as of what the noise ordinance is now, the only days where the unreasonable noise standard for construction applies are on federal holidays, and there are eleven of them, and I think you can see, we listed them out. Those eleven, those are the official names. This is for twenty twenty-three. So noise generated by some common sources of noise in the valley, such as property maintenance, like lawn activities, or cross-country trail grooming, or snow making, are not regulated. Not constructions. Now, lastly, because of some questions about this, observe federal holidays. So this is, this is where it gets a little confusing. The law on federal holidays allows for holidays, heat to specific date, to be observed on the nearest Monday or Friday if the holiday date falls on a Sunday or Saturday respectively. For example, if you look at the, if you look at the chart, this year, New Year's Day fell on a Sunday, but was observed on Monday, second of January. The next observed day this year is Veterans Day, which is eleven November, but it falls on a Saturday, so it will be observed on Friday, tenth November. So identification of observed holidays is generally taken to mean that most people have the day off from work or vote on both the actual holiday and when it is observed. It is meant to replicate the practice set in law, create, quote-unquote, "three-day weekends" around federal holidays. As a result, for this year, as I just pointed out, nine of the eleven federal holidays are celebrated as part of three-day weekends, because two were moved to the Friday. I think in both cases, no, one was a Monday and one is a Friday. So observed days can range from zero to three in any given year, and you can see the breakdown. I, I did a quick breakdown, only to twenty thirty, and you can see when the date actually changed. So this year, we have two changes. Next year, in twenty twenty-five, there are no observed holidays. Twenty twenty-six, you can read down and you can see what the actual observed day change would be for a particular holiday. Most holidays don't move, right? Because by law, they are set as the, the third Monday or the second Monday. They have that, that type of language. So those never move. But obviously, some do. And from this, when the Select Board discussed this, I mean, we approached this as recognizing that Waterville Valley is a resort town. So we thought that fostering a welcoming environment on three-day weekends for the enjoyment of guests and taxpayers and residents in particular, providing opportunities for businesses to schedule special activities, all of that will be important goals. So to that end, the Board recommends that the construction unreasonable noise standard be applied to observe federal holidays as well as federal holidays, and that's why you see the distinction in the, in the warrant article. I include those in the noise ordinance. And I think by way of background, hopefully, that kind of clears up. I know there's a lot of questions about, about the noise ordinance and, and what we're really trying to talk about. Oh, well.
Yeah.
You see, okay. So I think, anyway, those are just notes I made to myself. I tried to understand it myself, so hopefully everyone else understood it. So I don't know, Wendy, if you have any thinking like to add to that. Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open up the floor to discussion. If you do have comments, questions, please come through the microphone, state your name. And you are limited to three minutes.
From a Turner from River Road. My question is, is the intent of the Select Board to have both the actual federal holiday and the observed part of this prohibition? In other words, this year, it would be both the tenth and the eleventh of November?
Yes, that was, that was the, that was the intent.
But it's not here. Is this your list of, of holidays? The eleventh is missed?
No, no, I think what Margaret is, is, is at, and you can see that on Veterans Day, I didn't put November eleventh as the actual day. The observed day is the tenth.
I understand, but, but. If, if you're going to make a list that's going to be publicly available, it should be every single day?
Yeah, no, we, we, we will make a list, and if you look at the year twenty twenty-three below that chart, you can see Veterans Day is celebrated on tenth November. New Year's Day was celebrated on two Jan. I just didn't put eleven, but you make a list. When we do the list, and we do intend to make, make, to make a list.
All right, I want somebody else to ask.
Anyone else? Please come through the microphone and state your name.
Harvey Gerstein from River Road up on North Face area. Question, not with the holidays. Question is, I don't see any place you mentioned motorcycles, and especially this weekend and next week. Over the years, we've had some serious noise issues, so just wondering how that fits into the program.
Yeah, I think that's covered under paragraphs four and five. Leaking. If you look at paragraph four and, and paragraph five, and that's regulated any time of day, not just during, you know, the quiet hours. We all think about like ten PM to eight or nine.
Yeah, motor, motor vehicle includes anything with a, with a motor that's registered to be driven on the road.
Anyone else?
Barry Fish, Platinum Road. We live up on the hill. And we hear everything that goes on in Waterville. Great engine from the dams. Click, clack, click, clack from the skateboard park. Beep, beep, beep when you fill up the tanks downtown. And all of that's part of it. But we've got two brand-new houses that are going to be built within a couple hundred feet of our house. And we have more houses that are going to be built, so this is going to go on for several years. We've got Golden Heights Condo, which is very close. And when you think that you could hear three peaks, but we can, and it's all day long. It would be great to have one day, one day where we didn't have to listen to it.
John Benson, Village Condom Inn. This is only for questions. You can I just make a comment? So last year, Sunnyside Condo, credit to Jason, our property, had construction for at least three or four months straight, nonstop, every hour available to them. And fortunately, we had Sunday where there was no noise. And I worked Monday to Friday, sometimes Saturday. I just really appreciated having the one day off where I'm not hearing hammers and all kinds of construction noise, and I think it's a reasonable request. Okay.
David Ritten, West Branch Road. At the town meeting vote, what were the figures? What was the yeas and what were the nays? Vote.
Total votes for this article?
At the town meeting.
Was eighty-nine total votes.
Eighty-nine total votes, and how many in favor and how many opposed?
Fifty-six in favor of the amended article and thirty-three opposed.
Well, so, and why are we here tonight if we've already passed this?
As Rich said, after the vote, the Select Board received numerous dozens of complaints from people who either did not understand what the article was that they voted on. That was one comment I heard. Another comment is people didn't stay. It was a very long meeting, if you recall. People didn't stay because they did not anticipate the amendments would be made to this article. They thought it was a benign article. They never envisioned that Sundays would be removed from, from that statement. You know, they thought that might happen. They would have stayed.
I didn't get the number, but how many people are here to vote today?
There are over thirty-five.
Okay, so eighty-nine votes in the town meeting is less than twenty-five percent of the eligible voters. So property owning, stuck homeowners get no vote. So at the town meeting, less than twenty-five percent of the total voters voted. And now, half that number is going to vote on something else. Doesn't seem right to me.
Come up to the microphone, please. Regina Dunn, Summit D. I know the, the timing is till ten o'clock. But every Friday and Saturday night, and some Sunday nights in the summertime, actually from sometimes March all the way to September or October, all of us neighbors listen to music till ten o'clock, and I know it's legal. But, and now you're saying it can't be measured? It's getting louder. It's, we've been in this condo for five years now, and it's really loud. I don't know if there is. I know, I'm just eighty. It's, I don't know how the council can live with it. It's just, if you want to go to bed early, you can't, because it's just a fun thing for, you know, anyway, that's all I'm just saying. It's a, it's something you can do, but people live here too.
So just as another general comment, it's a slide, a slide up. If you look at the slide, it says Article One. What, what we would be changing, right? So you have in front of you, the article is as it currently, excuse me, the noise ordinance as it currently stands. It incorporates into, what's incorporated into it is the vote that, that David mentioned in March of twenty twenty-three. So Sundays, you see, has, is no longer applicable, apply the noise ordinance. The unreasonable amount of noise standard is not applied to Sundays, so that, that change is made. So if, on this particular warrant article, that would be one change. It would be putting Sundays back into the unreasonable noise standard application pool, if you would. Right? So that, that's one way to look at it. Federal holidays, as I, as I mentioned at the start, the Select Board understood this direction from town meeting to the eleven federal holidays to pick holidays to remove from the unreasonable noise standard, to allow, in other words, for construction activity that would have generated unreasonable noise on, if they had been part of the standard. So when we looked at it from a construction activity viewpoint, there were clearly only five, maybe six holidays where this was an issue, right, during construction season, if you would. From Memorial Day at the end of May, certainly through Columbus Day in the middle of October, let's say, but sometimes including Veterans Day, with, you know, in mid-November, where presumably, and there has been outside construction then. So we were, we were only looking at five, maybe six days that we really thought we could select from to remove from the unreasonable noise standard. So we did pick two, as I mentioned at the top, but there was objections to the two that we selected. So we're leaving that part up to the town, whether you still want the Select Board to remove any federal holidays from the, the noise. Right now, it's in a band. We've not selected any to remove. And lastly, the third item here is observed federal holidays. Select Board's recommending, let's also add observed federal holidays. And you can see the impact that that would, would have in one of the handouts to the noise ordinance. That, that is not in the noise ordinance. So what you are voting on will be those three changes, if we have, if we have that vote.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if this group here does decide that they're hesitant to make such a change with the noted lower numbers, that vote can be taken as well. There's been enough discussion around this at the Select Board to realize that perhaps the noise ordinance itself needs a bit of work, which is something that could be done during this coming year or next year's town meeting. So that is a vote that could be brought tonight as well.
Are you making those ready?
No, I'm letting folks know that it takes five people to petition, to petition, right? Two percent of the, of the registered voters for a minimum of ten.
For twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. You know, you, you brought up a good question, why are we here? If we already voted on this, why are we here? The Select Board can call a special town meeting at their discretion. If it has to do with money, they have to get permission from the state and the Supreme Court. It's a big deal. If they call you guys back, they have a special town meeting to ask for money. There, that's a very big deal. But if it doesn't involve money, they can call a special town meeting when they want. And in this case, they decided, because they had already plus people come to them and say, they don't like this. We think it's wrong. They decided to have a special town meeting. They could have done nothing. And those people that didn't like the outcome of the town meeting could have petitioned for a special town meeting, and it only would have taken ten of them to request that, and then would be here. So we're not circumventing any due process. This is part of the process to answer, answer your question. And I know we are here today for the first two paragraphs of the noise ordinance, which has to do with construction noise. And there's a lot of noise that people are concerned about. Whether it's construction noise or any kind of noise, you don't need to wait for a meeting, a town meeting, to raise your concern. The Select Board are available. They listen to every, pay attention to every email they get. They have a privilege of the floor at every Select Board meeting. And maybe even, starting in July, they will be moving the Select Board meetings to five PM on Thursdays. So they're hoping for more participation than during the day on Wednesdays. They thought, well, maybe it's hard for people to come. So there are other avenues. You don't need to wait for a town meeting to raise your concerns. And in some cases at the town meeting in March, if you're raising concerns, it's too late to do anything about them, because they have to be on the warrant in order to be addressed. So.
So if this, if this warrant article is tabled, the, 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 the noise ordinance would stand as this, which is seven days a week, construction activity is allowed from eight AM to seven PM, and on Saturdays and Sundays from nine AM to seven. And all federal holidays, we, again, we were looking for guidance. We selected two, but there was some pushback on those two. So right now, all federal holidays are subject to the unreasonable amount of noise standard, even though we were instructed to pick some.
Hi, Jenny Lucas, twenty-two, Lost Pass Road. Thank you, Rich and Patty, for your explanations. It's, it's great to hear all that info. This is essentially just switching it back to what it was before this past town meeting with the addition of observed days added in. And I fully support this measure. As someone who lives in a neighborhood who is very affected by one of the large commercial construction projects going on right now, it is nonstop, and having that Sunday, having that three-day weekend is so great to just be able to get a break from the noise. So I encourage us to vote yes to pass this amendment, to just put it back to what it was. I was one of the people that went home after hour four of the town meeting, thinking this was totally benign, and it just watched it go off the rails at home and couldn't believe it. So I'm happy that we're having a special town meeting, and I hope that it passes. Thank you.
Michael Powell, Lemon River, Oates. I live in the other construction zone. And if you think that this is a construction period, they work all winter long, last year. All right, so forget that. Madam Moderator, I move to call, call, call the vote.
Hey, I'm going to wait to see if anyone else has any comments.
Mike from River Road. I'm just curious, so for the people that lived there, this construction, this has been allowed since March fifteenth. Has anybody done construction on Sunday? Do you know? Do you know that there has been noise on Sunday?
Yeah.
Every. Every Sunday?
No.
Now, I I changed my question.
Can you, uh Mike, please just, Mike, I'll go just to address the moderator.
Madam Moderator, gonna hear about this at home. Um was it more than one Sunday is? And and I'm just trying to get a lay of the land here. If work hadn't been done on a single Sunday, could they come to the select board and petition and and get a and be allowed to work on Sunday? My issue is, and I know I'm not, I'm, I don't think this is an issue. I don't think people are doing construction on Sundays. I just don't think it's 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 something that's happening a lot of the time. And I'm with David on this. This was voted on by um by eighty-nine people, fifty-six saying yes. I think it's a shame for us to undo what the townspeople voted on. Thank you.
So on the uh, please, I just made one response. Uh uh, yes, I mean, uh we recognize, the select board recognize that that construction, especially outdoors construction, right? We're talking about the bulldozers and the dump trucks on Saturdays and especially on Sundays uh are highly unlikely, but we can't stop it if it's not in our noise ordinance. And so the idea was that we would have some protection and that they could come to the select board and say, uh, we need, and that happened in uh Veterans Day last year, where uh one of the developers working on, I think it was Green Peak, uh to ask to be able to work on uh Veterans Day because of the impending cold weather and the need to finish some groundwork before they can pay. And we granted that exception. We we gave them the permit. So that was that was the process. Whereas now, if Veterans Day is removed from it, they can just do it. Sundays are removed as they are now. They can just do it, and the town cannot cannot uh stop it.
Uh my comment was for a stream. Uh I just wanted to encourage that that last meeting was really long. And I sat there in the back, and I kept thinking, I can't be, I can't be. But I stayed till the end, but I saw person after person after person that left. And not only that, toward the end, probably a lot of people weren't even paying attention to what's going on. The way that you're doing this meeting, I understand, is not legal. And people that are interested could have shown up. If we're not excluding anybody, the plenty of meetings are poorly attended. And if people are interested and present their opinion or voting, they have the opportunity to show up because this has been announced for a long time, spread on my calendar. It's been, I get email notifications, you've been posting out of town. There's plenty of advanced notifications for those that are interested.
We could have gone on, but we had a whole discussion on the article that we decided not to read in March. We kind of said people were.
Might be a corner. Don't we have a motion on the floor to call a question?
Uh he tacked that on to the end of one of his comments, so I didn't accept that as a as a motion. And there are other people waiting to speak.
Okay, so I have a second. Same thing.
There's been a a motion to call the question. Do I hear a second?
Better.
Second, lots of seconds.
Hey, this is the time to get out your charters, cards. And I'm gonna be holding mine up to ask for the a's and a's, but my, I'm not actually voting. I'm just demonstrating. I will only vote um for a good time, and so please don't let her be a time. And all those in favor of Article One, please raise your cards.
I thought we were doing a word favor of calling the question. I'm really gonna hear it in a moment.
All those in favor of calling the question. A. And now we're gonna vote on the article. Are those in favor? I'm sorry. Right now, we are voting on Article One. Do you want it read again? Rich, can you begin again?
I will be reading, okay. Um so uh the change, Article One, would make this change the current noise ordinance. No construction activity that produces an unreasonable amount of noise, which may be heard from adjacent and/or public properties, shall be permitted anytime on Sundays, federal holidays, and any observed federal holidays. So the voting, yes, seems in support of that. Correct, yeah. We can't say it.
Uh it is also on the handout on um at the bottom of the first page. Yeah, Article One.
No.
I'm sorry. We don't have it. If anyone wants to read mine.
I can read it again, too, if anyone wants to hear it again.
And uh Dave's gonna turn the light up so we can make sure everyone reads it. Hey, anyone need more time? Okay, so we call the question. Everyone in favor of Article One, raise your cards. Thank you. All against? Good. Motion passes overwhelmingly. And thank you all for coming.